The Planning Commission holds public meetings and makes recommendations to the City Council on all matters relating to the creation of zoning districts, the enforcement of zoning regulations, amendments to all zoning ordinances, and any other planning and zoning issue. Anthony Levy has withdrawn his application from consideration. There are two vacancies and eight nominees. The nominees are Jeff Brand, Lori Ko, Robert Fishman, Jason Heatland, Renee Higgs, whose term expires this month and is eligible for reappointment, Mike Land Joyner, Diana Kaminsky, and Ed Peazer. Mr. Brand, if you would approach the podium, you have two minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Jeff Brand. I live at 8128 East Mitchell Drive, just down the street here at Hayden and Osborne. I have lived in Scottsdale in that home for about 12 years. My wife was born in Scottsdale. I've got two kids that are currently in Scottsdale Unified School District, so needless to say, we're going to be here for a while. I'm applying for Planning Commission. I am an architect locally here in Scottsdale for about 23 years now, so I do both building design and master planning. I'm currently a member of the Development Review Board, but I'm applying to the Planning Commission because really, master planning and planning in general is a focus of what my expertise is and what I do every day. So, I've worked for Nelson Partners for about 23 years. I'm a partner there. I'm the Director of the Design Department, so I oversee all of the work that's, the design work that's being done, but the work that I actually do and not oversee is all master planning work. What I'm seeing, both locally, regionally, and nationally, are issues that are going to cause a lot of concern for cities moving forward. There's been a shift in uses with how people work, how people live, how restaurants and retail operate, and just how the general mixture of how life happens. All of these things regarding uses and the relationship between uses is what I am tackling and looking at and advising upon through public-private partnerships and just to public entities and private entities about how to develop and tackle these issues and have great master plans and great planning moving forward. That's what I do all day long. I saw and read the description for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's job is to essentially provide expertise and advisement to City Council. And City Council is elected officials, you know, you guys approve things, but the Planning Commission is really a body that provides a level of professional expertise, or in my, I'd like to contribute professional expertise, to just give advisement, not to push decisions in one way or another, but to tell you what I'm seeing across the country in different cities, and to just tell you what I'm seeing and the effects of different planning moves and things that are happening, not just here, but in other cities in Arizona. And, oh, did the two minutes not start?
Yeah.
Oh.
You're doing a great job.
Well, sorry, I will cut it off there, and I hope you guys will consider my application, so.
Perfect. Hang on one moment. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brand?
Here's a quick question.
Sure.
Ms. Brand, so, in the local market, you may be using sub-designers or other professionals, engineers perhaps, sustainability people. You're aware, of course, of the conflict of interest, which if you had a case, you wouldn't be voting on it.
Yeah.
But how do you feel if you happen to use the same sub-consultant that came before, with another project that came before you? You weren't the prime architect, but you basically used the whole team that you, on your own projects.
Yeah, I would think that on a case-by-case basis, if I felt I would get the advice of the city attorney, and if I felt, and the attorney felt, that there was any sort of conflict of interest, I would absolutely abstain or remove myself from that case. Yeah, there's no, I've served on the review board for a little over a year, and it's been the exact same protocol for removing yourself, of course, from any case that you would have any unbiased opinion on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I definitely have questions. I think this is one of the most important boards we have. Of course, that's why we have so many applicants, because I think a lot of our citizens recognize that. I know on council, we depend on our Planning Commission for their planning and zoning expertise, as you mentioned, when we evaluate projects that come before us. I know I often will call members of our Planning Commission when I need an extra help. And I feel very strongly that we need commissioners who will review cases and provide us with their professional, unbiased, fact-based recommendations that meet the criteria of our city code, not just an opinion. So, Mr. Brand, you've been a valuable member of our DRB, as you mentioned, and I appreciate your expertise. Could you please tell us in a little bit more detail how your education, employment, or volunteer experience specifically relates to this Planning Commission, and your ability to advise council on issues of planning and zoning in particular?
Sure, I'd be happy to expound on that. There's, without going into detail about projects that are currently working on, just a snippet of background, I'm currently working up in the Salt Lake City area to address a number of urban planning issues, reviewing quality control for the Daybreak community there. We're designing an entire downtown urban and fill master plan for a 300-acre city called Vineyard, and we're doing that in conjunction with Jeff Speck, who's the National Authority on Walkable Cities. And so, we're implementing probably the first walkable city master plan in this region. I'm working with Goodyear, the City of Goodyear, on a public-private master planning effort down to redesign their downtown area adjacent to City Hall. Obviously, I was working on the replanning in conjunction with the City of Phoenix of the Paradise Valley Mall, so we're doing all of the master planning work at Paradise Valley Mall. I'm working on advising the Queen Creek in economic development and the city of Queen Creek about how to have public-private partnerships through their RFP process, and to get the right developments that really enhance their downtown vision, and how to actually make that happen. I'm working with the City of Gilbert right now on their pedestrian connectivity Paseo Plan to get walkability to extend in and out of the Heritage District. I'm also participating in all of their transportation workshops to help them understand the impacts of different uses and architectural uses and planning on the transportation. I'm working at Tempe as a liaison with the ASU Real Estate Department on the Novus Project to make sure that there's viability in the retail and the uses that are being planned on the Novus campus. I'm part of the OLI, and I'll be participating in the technical assistance panels, which is what cities, essentially, it's a function of OLI to go in and to provide assistance to cities. In a brief moment, it's a workshop where you assist cities, so I'll be doing that this year. And locally here in Scottsdale, I've been working with, there's been a number of projects that we've worked on, but most recently, I've been working with staff on, as a liaison to help coordinate construction cost mechanism for staff to be able to relook at downtown development bonus standards. And we recently completed a project, I have our Sustainability Director in our office, I've spoken with her, and we're reaching out to the city to make sure that the sustainability efforts that are mandated through the zoning process, there's actually a method in which those get tracked and implemented, because we recently had a project, the Scent House Hotel, where there was an IGC, IGCC, Scottsdale Green Building Code was mandated through zoning, but there, through the tracking of permitting, there really wasn't a implementation plan. Now, on that project, we submitted for Green Globes, and so, we had to go through a certification plan because of that, but there was nothing that we had to do through the permitting process or occupancy process that was done. So, we've contacted Lisa McNeely with the head of Sustainability, and we're working with her to make sure that sustainability efforts that are mandated through zoning track and have an implementation mechanism through building permits and through occupancy, so.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Wow, that was way more extensive than I was expecting, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you so much.
I ran out of time.
I know. No, it's all good. Any other questions? Otherwise, we will...
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Were you involved in the Old Town Character Area Plan in 2018?
I'm sorry?
Were you involved with ISDR Board?
No, I was not.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Ko, if you would like to approach the podium?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Lori Ko. I live at 9214 East Wood Drive, 85260, and I've lived at that residence for about 17 years. I am honored that you would even consider me for this position on the Planning Commission, especially since the last speaker spoke. Please don't write me off, though, because I am qualified. I've been an Arizona resident since 1978. I chose to live in Scottsdale because it is the most beautiful, thriving city in the valley, a place I truly call home and a hometown to love. As a licensed realtor since 1987 and a broker since 1990, I've experienced Scottsdale's growth, both as a resident and real estate professional. I've witnessed the ups and downs of the real estate market through facilitating the sale of small businesses, homes and land, and brokered a large commercial leasing company. As a veteran of Scottsdale 101, Scottsdale Fire, Police, and Water Academies, and as a member of the Western Spirit Museum, I place a high value on our heritage. Serving on the Human Relations Commission for six years and Chair for one, I've seen the impact of a city that celebrates diversity. The mutual understandings created are fundamental to a healthy community, and I thank you all for that opportunity. As a mediator, a student of active listening, and of nonviolent communication, I participate at Arizona Town Hall, a consensus-building nonprofit working with municipalities. Serving on the Board of Scottsdale Community Partners, we contract with Scottsdale Social Services to fund and help implement programs like Empty Bowls, Back to School, Healthy Packs, Adopt a Family, and Adopt a Senior. The Planning Commission is the bridge between the council, city staff, developers, and the citizenry. My understanding of land use, land rules, and land regulations, my ability to read a plat map and architectural plans, gives me the insights that the Planning Commission needs. I commit to listen to all parties doing onsite visits to proposed projects, and if I don't understand, I will ask questions and seek help. Our legacy is a community that we can work together for, for the common good. I have an open mind with no hidden or personal agendas. I am not using this appointment as a career stepping stone. I will study each project that comes before the Commission and will not make any crucial decision until I have learned as much as possible. Please don't write me off from joining this Commission. Any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I have a couple of questions, actually. You sent us an awful lot of background information, and so, I read it, and I just wanted to ask a few questions about what you sent us. Some of the things said that you believe that every person's viewpoint is of value and that your main issue for planning and zoning was bringing people together. I'm not quite sure how that's Planning Commission's main issue, but since you were highlighting it, I just, I was recently at a public meeting with you where people were actually rudely shut down, and I found that kind of interesting. People with different viewpoints actually didn't get a chance to speak, and so, I was wondering if you could give me an example of a time when you heard an opposing view with an open mind, and then you modified your position and helped to bring people together?
Hmm. Well, that's an interesting question. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I was at that table at that meeting with you, I did not know that person, and I really was flummoxed by the rude behavior of another person. I do believe in civil discourse, and I do believe that we need citizens on this Commission to listen to all these points of view. We need to hear from the people of Scottsdale when a new project comes up, and that's where I really feel that every voice needs to be heard before the Planning Commission advances projects to the council.
And I love what you're saying, but it's just hard for me to understand when you say you want to be a voice of reason without an ideological viewpoint or agenda, because every email we get from you is ideological. It's "development is destruction, not construction; the council and the PC are rubber stamps; we have blinders on; we're condescending; we don't listen." I mean, it's all in the public record. So, I appreciate that you're saying you're open-minded, and you actually use the words "pro-development," but yet, every project is opposed when we get the emails, and they're strongly opposed. So, I'm just, my final question is, I'm having a hard time understanding how you would work as a team member of council and of Planning Commission after you've thrown what I felt was quite a few stones. So, and I'm also wondering what metrics you're using to evaluate a project with, you just, you keep saying "an open mind," so I just, I haven't had that experience from you, and you've been very vocal, so...
I've been vocal about projects that I disagree with, and I have not...
Is there a project that you did agree with?
I haven't voiced any opinion about projects that you've all approved. You have approved many projects that I haven't spoken out against, Vice Mayor. I respect the work that you do, and I only speak out when I have an opposition, and I often feel that that opposition isn't heard, so I have been frustrated. And I do feel that the Planning Commission is the bridge between the citizens from the city to the Planning Commission, to the council for approval of plans. I'm not, I'm really, my only ideological opinion is that we need to preserve the peace and tranquility of our city. It's a beautiful town, it's suburban, I don't want to urbanize Scottsdale, so if that was an ideological position, that is it. I don't want to see us urbanized.
I mean, yeah, I won't belabor the issue. To me, destruction, calling development destruction as opposed to construction is a little bit ideological, but I don't have any other questions. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Ko.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I'm hoping we can have some brief questions and brief answers as we go forward.
Again, I think all of these Commissions are so important, and we're hiring people who are going to have the job for two years, so I'm doing my best.
Are we next?
Thank you. Mr. Fishman, would you like to approach the podium? Three years.
Mayor and Council members, my name is Rob Fishman. I live at 9076 North 117th Way, Scottsdale, it's in Stonegate, 85259. As a practical matter, I've been on the Board of Stonegate and an officer of Stonegate, which is a over 900 resident homeowners association. I've lived in Scottsdale for 10 years, and while I may not have architectural and engineering background, I have a background that I think is also very, very valuable. I've been a CEO of both public and private companies, I've been on boards of public and private companies. I've had to exercise and learn judgment over a long period of time. I was Chief Underwriting Officer of Zurich North America and on the global underwriting team. I assigned underwriting responsibilities to all of North America, over 10,000 employees, to give an example. So, the task that I see, an important task of the Planning Commission that I see, is how do you balance these interests? What is the process that you go through? So, for instance, members of this Board have talked about certain concerns about what we need to do in Scottsdale. As an example, heat mitigation, sustainability, emergency planning, housing, getting things done, versus the priorities that you've also set forth, which are value, Scottsdale's long-term lifestyle, support economic vitality, enhance neighborhoods, preserve meaningful open space, seek sustainability, advance transportation. How do you take these competing interests in the context of a general plan and make smart decisions that are both economic and support the priorities that we have, and at the same time, advance the interests of our citizens and also the economy going forward? So, you know, the trade-offs or projections, I mean, for instance, you know, on the heat map, or how do we improve the brand for Scottsdale tourism, based upon the decisions we make on pieces of property across the city? There are certain things that we must do. I call those must-dos. There are other things that are nice to have. There are other things that are aspirational and inspirational, that really drive the results of a city and its attraction to others. So, is that detailed due diligence, lots of balance and judgment, understanding the mission that I would bring to the Planning Commission? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Does anyone have any questions? All right, you lucked out this time. I'll hold my question for the moment. Could we have Mr. Heatland approach the podium, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. My privilege to be here. My name's Jason Heatland. I live at 3220 North 81st Street in Scottsdale, Arizona, right down the road here. Proud Scottsdale resident. I've lived in that neighborhood for 19 years, and a Scottsdale resident pretty much my whole life, since I was about two. My qualifications, I owned a business in downtown Scottsdale. I grew up in a family who owned a business in downtown Scottsdale. After selling that business, went into public service and worked for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Scottsdale. I'm a life member of the Scottsdale Charles, graduate of Class 17 Scottsdale Leadership. I'm now a nonprofit executive, both with the Valley of the Sun YMCA, and I worked in their facilities in building management, as well as program management. I lead with my heart. I love this city. I come from a background of a person who's grown up here, has been molded here, who went to Scottsdale Public Schools, who owned a business, who's worked and played in this beautiful city, and responsible growth, adhering to the character of the city, and the city charter and master plan, and working common sense development. Not all projects are good, and not all projects are bad. There's common ground that needs to be found. I lead with my heart, and I lead with the will of the people and the business side of things. I think that so many times, there's been divisiveness in our city, and a lot of "all development is bad, all development is good." I don't believe that. I'm more of a centrist, and I believe that the city and the people who live here, and the businesses who operate here, need to be consulted and talked to and listened to, and I pledge to talk to all those people in that will be affected by projects and give you my best heartfelt judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I should have asked this quick question.
Sure.
Have you been to Commission meetings?
Have I been to a Commission meeting? No, I have not been to Planning Commission.
That was all my quick, I should have asked everything.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
I guess I had kind of just one quick similar question, too. I was wondering if you could just, maybe just one point about how your experience relates to Planning Commission, in particular, your ability to advise council on issues of planning and zoning.
Sure. As a small business owner and as also a nonprofit executive who, our daily lives and our livelihood and the way that we do our business is affected by the planning and zoning and laws and the decisions that the council makes. And I approach this from a real citizen's point of view. I'm not a developer, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an expert, like the gentleman earlier, the architect. But those are the people that you consult with, those are the people you consult with, the common person and the person who owns the business. And I feel like that that's my strength, to find out what the people in the area that are affected by this, and how that affects the city in a macro sense, how we can move forward into the future Scottsdale that we need for sustainability and growth.
Thank you, Mr. Heatland. If there aren't any other questions, I will call Ms. Higgs to the podium, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Kapooti, and City Council members. My name is Renee Higgs. I live at 15192 North 104th Way, and I've lived in Scottsdale approximately 10 years. I stand here before you this afternoon, seeking your support for reappointment to the Planning Commission. I have been honored to serve on this Commission for the last three years, including the last year as Chair. Prior to planning, I served as a member of the city's Transportation Commission. I've also held various volunteer leadership roles throughout the city with the Scottsdale Chamber and Scottsdale Leadership. My career, however, is in marketing, and outside of the realm of planning, development, zoning, real estate, and architecture. Yet, there are many aspects of the marketing roles I've held for the local large organizations that have helped me on this Commission. As the former Regional Marketing Manager for Mayo Clinic in Scottsdale, and as a current Senior Marketing Strategist for SRP, I have my finger on the pulse of local economic development, residential and commercial growth, and even unique insights on the status of the valley's water supply. These insights have helped paint for me a more comprehensive picture of planning and zoning cases as they are presented to the Planning Commission, and all without any conflicts of interest or need for recusals. The tough issue facing the Planning Commission continues to be preparing for growth through responsible and thoughtful zoning and development. With the success of our local economy and the volume of movers to the valley, no growth is just not an option. Smart growth must be the focus, and it needs to be viewed through the lens of balance, balance of residential, business, economic, and environmental needs. We need to protect the future of our city and maintain the tenets of its rich history while adhering to the guidelines of the general plan. I believe I've served on this Commission as a rational, informed voice, representing the balanced needs and varying perspectives of this great city, and with that, I'd like to ask for your vote for reappointment to continue to be this voice. I thank you for your time, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Ms. Higgs?
Yes, quick question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I believe, were you involved with the Old Town Character Area Plan when you were on the transportation, or?
With the what? I'm sorry?
With the Old Town Character Area...
Right, what was the last part that you said after that?
Plan, either as a DR Board member, or...
No, not as, no.
And Transportation Commission?
Um, I don't remember coming through as a component of Transportation during the time that I served, in a year and a half.
Okay, so the other basic question is that, you know, we're in a situation where the council has asked to revisit because of excessive heights or density or whatever, that even the mapping that may be a question, and that's the direction that we're in right now. As a, I don't want to say, do you consider yourself kind of an insider to that whole program, or do you feel that there are some things that need to be changed?
An insider? No, I don't know that I'm an insider to really any specific case or super close to. I treat them all individually and understand the components of each one. When it comes to the Downtown Character Area Plan, I do see that it has gone back out to residents to get, and business owners to get some of their feedback. I know there are some concerns with, have been addressed with the height and some density and multifamily as well. The multifamily one is tricky. That's another one of those where we need to look at balance, because we do need to make sure that there is some sort of housing available for different types of members of our community. So, I don't, I think it's good that it's being put back out there for the community and business owners to reevaluate and provide their, or to take a look at and provide their feedback.
So, at this time, you don't have any particular opinion about height, density, or how they impact on infrastructure, or what is your opinion?
I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't have any specific details that I can go into while standing in front of you this evening, but I do think it's important, again, to have that balance of maintaining that rich history that the Old Town has been known for, while still making sure that we can prepare for the future of the city as a whole.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgs?
Yes.
You've one question.
Yeah.
You've been a super valuable member of our Planning Commission. I know I've called you many times for advice, and I appreciate your expertise and experience. Could you just tell us briefly how your experience on the Planning Commission, and particularly as Chair, has made you a better Commissioner, and how you'll use that experience going forward if you were to be appointed for another term?
Yeah, great question. I mean, I've certainly learned a whole lot in the three years that I've served, having come into this, you know, fairly new to planning, zoning, and development. But as much as I think that I have listened and heard the opinions of those within our community, I still think that I've learned even more about the varying opinions and sometimes misconceptions across our community regarding growth and development. But as a Commission member, I've always made sure to actively listen to the pro, no, and slow growth opinions shared throughout the city, with residents, business owners... slow growth opinions shared throughout the city with residents, business owners, staff and city council members as well. And I think it's important to note that when I meet with applicants and zoning attorneys, I make sure to also ask both sides of, you know, what is it about this case and your project that will be of benefit to the city? And I also ask, what have been the biggest pushbacks from the community and what are you doing to address and mitigate those? As Chair, I learned it's an interesting position to be in because I know that while at the end of each case, I'm going to be placing my vote, I still need to make sure, and it's imperative that I'm leading those commission discussions through an impartial and a non-political stance. And I think that's really important because really, as a Planning Commission, we need to make sure that we're providing those recommendations on planning and zoning issues to you, the City Council, to help you with your deliberations and really to make sure that we have allowed for a healthy discussion with the facts and opinions of all those that have been involved.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Higgs.
Thank you.
Ms. Joyner, would you like to approach the podium?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Joyner. I live at 11216 East Dale Lane in Scottsdale. My husband and I have lived there for 22 years, and I am a native Arizonan. I thank you for allowing me to speak today. I consider the city of Scottsdale to be like a corporation, and those of you that are sitting on council are the CEOs of that corporation. And anytime you're interviewing someone for a position, the first thing you do is look at their resume to see what they have done, because what they have done is a good indicator of what they might do in the future. While I do not have an engineering degree, I do have two master's degrees. And I have eight years of experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission in the city of Chandler, and I served as the chairman for four of those eight years. What's interesting about that is that I was reappointed by three consecutive mayors and I was voted by all of the city councils the last three times. It was unanimous, and you know how hard it is to get a unanimous decision from city council. I have a history of working well with developers and with citizens. In addition, I worked for two years on the planning or on the Chandler Board of Adjustments, and I chaired that for one of the years. I currently serve on the Development Review Board, and I do think experience does count. I have a reputation of working with developers and working with the citizens as well to get the absolute best product for the city of Scottsdale. The biggest challenge I see facing Scottsdale is not new. It's the same thing that it's been all along, and that's balancing the needs of the citizens, the growth of the city, the vision for the city, and the developers, and meeting a budget. I see Scottsdale's downtown as the gem of the future, and I think it takes planning, creativity, and care. So I am asking for your vote. I'm Michael Joyner.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Questions from the council? Great.
Nope.
We will now hear from Diana Kaminsky.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. My name's Diana Kaminsky, and I moved to Arizona from Michigan in 1980 and live in my current house at 8306 East Oak Street, 85257 for the last 20 years. I had a little interstitial space of 15 years in downtown Tempe as I pursued a Bachelor of Science in Design and a Master's in Public Administration. My qualifications for this position are a little unique. I'm not aspiring to a political position. I have probably no chance of having a recusal conflict of interest. I actually work as a city planner, and I have since 1995 in an adjacent community. And I've experienced a lot of the things that our community is now going through, all the way from building the town lake and writing the first general plan to go to a public election and working on zoning code text amendments for policy changes to address density and intensification in the community. I also had the unique opportunity of going through the variance process in both cities as a resident, and I always encourage planners to have the opportunity to put yourself in the shoes of applicants and see what the applicants are going through when they approach the bench and ask for something from the community. I also serve as a member of the Scottsdale Troop 201 Scout Troop. Been involved for 10 years. I've worked on Habitat for Humanity builds and have served intermittently with St. Mary's Food Bank and Vista del Camino. I think the top issue that's facing our community and the Planning Commission is directly involved in is the balance of land use issues and quality of life. And we've heard a little bit about that from some of the other applicants today. We've had about 14,000 new residential projects adopted since 2015. A lot of those have been in South Scottsdale. And we have to balance the need for attraction of jobs with the need for housing that's growing. That also includes looking at our water provisions at a time where we're asking residents to cut back 5% of their use of water and making adoptions for additional housing. And we're looking at road diets with our new transportation plan in South Scottsdale. So while we're asking for more increased density and housing in the southern area, we're reducing the size of the roads and asking for people to reduce their water consumption, which is a quality of life issue. So it is a balancing act, and we need to be able to progress and go forward, but we also need to protect the community that we have today. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? I just have one quick question. In the materials that you sent to us, you said that your top issue for the Planning Commission is that the citizens feel marginalized by new projects. And then you talk about valuing objective analysis of data. And then, it's so funny, seeing people finally at council that I've only known from emails. So, I mean, your emails are very opinionated and not very fact-based. So I would just want to ask the question, when you talk about balance and compromise in your application, which came up over and over, could you just give me an example of a project where you did actually listen to all the perspectives and then compromised for the best outcome?
Since I haven't served on a board, I've not really had that opportunity.
Well, not necessarily on a board.
But I can, I can give you an example. And like one of the other people that was applying, in a case where I don't see any issues, I don't usually respond. On some projects, I have provided feedback to the Design Review Board with constructive recommendations of things in design to make improvements to the design. And in that case, I might say, you know, this is a great project, but here's how we can make it better. I haven't really had a situation where I've been involved with, working with the commission and residents in terms of a compromise, but I did work with a group of residents who were concerned about a project and tried to help them understand the need for housing and that, looking at the general plan and the zoning ordinance and what was being requested and what changes could be made that might make it a better project for them to accept. Whether or not they agreed with that, it was my best effort.
Right, just, again, we hear from, there's a lot of people we hear from, and it's just always problems and problems and it's, you know, again, when you talk about balance, it's good to hear the good and the bad and how you actually do come to a better project, because I think that's the role of the Planning Commission, taking a project and meeting with all of the stakeholders and making the project better through compromise and balance. So, yes, thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions?
Councilman Durham and then Councilwoman Jack.
Thank you. Ms., are you still a senior city planner with Tempe?
I am.
Okay. With all due respect to our neighbor to the south, Tempe is often portrayed as the place that we don't want to be. We don't want to look like Tempe. So what can you tell us that you've learned from your experience with Tempe, and you're particularly sort of the high-rise environment, that would be able to assist you here in Scottsdale where I think in general, I think it's safe to say the feeling is we don't want the same type of high-rise and dense environment that we see in Tempe?
Sure.
So what have you learned that would help us?
Well, do you have 20 hours? So with my time in Tempe, it's been very interesting and it's been baptism by fire. As I said, I worked on the General Plan 2020, which was the first general plan to go to a state election or the election for the community through the state, Start Growing Smarter Initiative. The result of that effort was to actually separate the density map from the land use map for full transparency of density throughout the city. We also implemented what were called cultural resource areas in certain neighborhoods that aligned with the underlying zoning, so it didn't take property rights, but it basically froze those neighborhoods from the intensification that was happening around them. A lot of community members were worried about the encroachment of development within the older areas of the city. So we worked on trying to provide a balance that would accommodate the existing residents while still offering the opportunities for intensification on properties around them. We also looked at building heights. We've made a lot of changes to the zoning code. One of the things we did in 2005 was require our design applications related to planned area developments to be joined, to be heard at the city council. So rather than having separate boards, the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, we combined those into one, and they saw the design with the zoning standards being proposed. Because when you're talking about building height and massing, that's really hard to visualize if you're not talking about the design. So then those projects go forward to council, which adds a level of weight to those projects because now the commitment was before the council with a promise of pretty pictures. And if they want to change that, they have to go back through that public process. So it added a level of transparency. So I've worked very closely with neighborhoods on character area plans, looking at historic plant palettes, historic architecture, looking at what we can do to incorporate design elements of a historic area into newer architecture and newer projects that may be a bigger scale. And it is a balancing act, as I said. I did the first review of the first high-rise in Tempe West 6th, and that project came right at the culmination of a recession, and the project was basically shuttered in its construction state for three years. And I'm involved with economic development in looking at ways of attracting businesses and making sure that we don't have vacant buildings, whether it's an apartment building, a condo, or commercial buildings. How can we revitalize the older commercial centers, add housing where it's appropriate, and protect the neighborhoods that are in place? So it is a balancing act, I've learned. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jack?
Thank you. Have you seen great diversity of opinion in Tempe on some of the projects you have undertaken?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and then, and I asked that, but I was pretty sure you did. My next question is, how do you get the people to work together to come up with the best project so that for the most part, you get everybody to buy into that project?
I don't think you'll always make everyone happy, right? I think there was a wise person that said, if, you know, you make everybody happy, you're not doing your job. But I think the idea is to get consensus with as many as you can. And so bringing people in on the process early and listing as objectively as you can what their key issues are and looking for what things they would be willing to balance. So maybe X number of housing units is too many, but maybe Y would be acceptable and trying to come to some agreement in the middle way before it gets to a hearing process. So that neighborhood meeting is really, really important. And if the development community takes to heart what those residents are saying and they listen to them and they say, oh, yeah, okay, we can, we can work with this, then they're moving forward and they're able to say, we listened to the community and this is what we've come forward with, instead of a feeling of disenfranchisement where the neighbors continue to say the same thing over and over and don't feel like they're being heard. And I think there's a case that's coming back to you guys that actually asked to be continued and then changed names. So the level of transparency disappears and so you have residents who are all organized against something, and then it disappears and it's off the agenda, and then it pops back up as a new project with a new name. And I think that adds to the frustration. So keeping it transparent, keeping it open, I think really helps.
Then one last question. Obviously, we have a group of people that are always no and another group that are always yes. When you talk to the always no people, do you get them to come to a point where they will say what they do agree with, what they might want to see? In other words, no, this is too much, but there's a positive side to it, so you can get some concessions?
That really depends on the applicant, because my role as a city planner is not to facilitate that relationship necessarily. I can make suggestions and I can ask questions. Ultimately, it's up to the developer to come up with a way of making that happen. So I do what I can within the parameters. I can't be an advocate for the project and I can't be an advocate for the naysayers. It's the balancing act that I have, but I will ask questions and say, you know, okay, I've heard you say this, what would you consider this? And then it's up to them to figure that out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And yet you have been an advocate in the past for naysayers. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could we have Ed Peazer, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ed Peazer. I live at 8413 East Rosewood Lane in Scottsdale, 85251, and I've lived here in that house for the last 55 years. I love living in Scottsdale, and I really have never given any thought to living anywhere You asked about, in the three questions you asked about the experience, and so I wanted to say that I've worked in construction for 54 years, serving as a building inspector for 38 of those years. I'm a certified building official, and I have nine international code council certifications. I taught all the building codes, construction methods, and inspection technique classes at Scottsdale Community College from 1994 to 2016, and I have a lifetime teaching certificate. I worked in the Planning and Development Department in Scottsdale from 1984 until 2015, specifically in the building department. In 1985, the city leaders determined they needed someone to inspect buildings to verify that all the DRB stipulations in the Planning Commission development standards had been adhered to and completed before using or before issuing any of the final certificate of occupancies. I became that first planning inspector in 1985, and regardless of my position, I maintained those duties up until 1996. I served as deputy building official from 2005 to 2015, and I oversaw the Building Plan Review Department. One of my duties was to serve as Secretary of the Building Advisory Board of Appeals. I assisted the board with motions, Robert's Rules, and et cetera. I wrote all the building code amendments and presented those to the Building Advisory Board of Appeals for their recommendation to council. In 2015, after I retired, I applied for and was appointed to the Building Advisory Board. During my six years on the board, I served as chairman for four of those years. I'm familiar enough with the General Plan 2035 to understand how the supporting elements are applied and incorporated into the land use element. As a city employee and board member, it's always been my goal to serve the citizens of Scottsdale. My term with the Building Advisory Board ended last September, and I'm hoping to continue my service to the community with this commission. As far as the top issue and listening to all the comments tonight, it's hard to pick. But I think the top issue facing the Planning Commission is to provide our citizens with a quality development, whether it be commercial, residential, or multifamily, that meet all of our design standards. With people moving here every day, whether they're citizens or moving their businesses here, the board's attention to new development, whether it be older developed properties that are being removed and a modern new building is being built in its place, or upgrading older properties to meet modern standards, is essential. All properties need to meet the city's standards, are well-designed, and are particularly sensitive to the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you for your nomination, the opportunity to come before you, and to possibly serve the citizens of Scottsdale again.
Thank you, Mr. Peazer. Are there any questions? Great. I will now entertain a vote for the Planning Commission. Each council member can vote for two. Each council member can vote for two nominees, and I believe we're up to Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you. So first of all, I just want to say, wow. I want to thank every single one of you. What an impressive list of candidates. I am just grateful. I've always said you just can't believe who you're going to find behind doors in this town. Oh, my goodness. So I will especially call out Mr. Brand, who I've had the pleasure of working with. Cities around the world are hiring him, and we get him for free. So thank you for helping us all the time and sometimes for pay. So what I'm hearing very clearly is that we do want to bring in new blood, so to speak. We want to bring in people who rep, who are, who have the ability to understand the projects and negotiate for better projects and ask meaningful questions and give us good guidance, but are in fact regular citizens. So I do want to say, everybody leave your name in the hat, but I am going to go ahead and, and I also always like to get my money's worth, so we have the opportunity to keep people for six years and remember they're actually free, but they do learn a lot in that first term. So I'm going to go ahead and vote to reappoint Renee Higgs, and I'm going to give my second vote to Mr. Robert Fishman. But please, keep your names in the hat. You guys are amazing.
Councilwoman Millhaven? And Mr. Brand and Ms. Higgs. Mayor Ortega?
Diana Kaminsky and Ed Peazer.
Councilwoman Littlefield?
Lori Coe and Michael Ann Joyner.
Councilwoman Janik?
Diana Kaminsky and Ed Peazer.
Councilman Durham?
I second Councilmember Whitehead's comments about the quality of all the applicants. There are many outstanding applicants, but the two that I'm going to pick are Renee Higgs and Diana Kaminsky.
Agree. This was an exceptional group of applicants, and I am going to vote for Jeff Brand and Renee Higgs. So we have, I believe, Renee Higgs and Diana Kaminsky. Is that right, Rommel?
Yeah, so Ms. Higgs is reappointed, so we're going to note her as appointed. Mr. Heaton did not receive any votes, so he will be removed from the listing here. And what we could do, you had Ms. Kaminsky, which got three votes, Jeff Brand and Ed Peazer, so you would revote amongst those three, since they were the three top.
Okay, tell me the names again. Mr. Brand?
Mr. Brand, Ms. Kaminsky, and Mr. Peazer.
Okay. I will just, well, let's just go in order then.
Just one moment to clear this.
Yep, sure. Great. Jeff Brand and Ed Peizer.
Vice Mayor, sorry, you can only vote for one.
It's never worked out like this before. You're going to leave with a bang. Okay, then I vote for Jeff Brand, please. Councilwoman Whitehead?
I'll vote for Diana Kaminsky.
Mr. Brand?
Mayor?
Diana Kaminsky.
Councilwoman Littlefield?
Diana Kaminsky.
Councilwoman Janik?
Diana Kaminsky.
Councilman Durham?
Diana Kaminsky.
Looks like we have Diana Kaminsky appointed.